Hey folks, thanks for coming. I want to start us with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so I'm proud today. All right, I know I got one somewhere. All right, we have minutes to approve?
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
It's been bad this time.
All right, we'll do minutes next time, see before. So we have a payroll in the amount of $213,603.3. Then Union Hospital, about $4,977. And then four. Excuse me?
I make a motion, we approve payroll for two, one in the amount of $213,603.3. And the other one for Union Hospital for $4,977.94.
I'll second that.
All fair and say aye.
The accounts payable for the payroll, we were lucky to get the payroll done today.
Okay.
So we'll do that next week.
Okay.
The regular accounts payable.
Yeah, we need to approve that knowledge receipt of.
Yep.
So then we have accounts payable to approve in the amount of $434,222. $434,222.
And I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable claims in the amount of $434,222.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Below that is the breakdown for you.
Okay. Do we have any requests for out cycle checks?
No, we don't.
Okay. I have a couple of things real quickly here to approve before we move on to departments. Chris O'Brien, Emergency Management Director, has, I think he was in the paper before, his request for grant approval. That grant approval is the grant that pays for the Emergency Management Director and Heather.
And then in your packet, we also obtained this disclosure, and I just made copies for you guys.
This is the second, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right. So I would make-
In your packet, it's a copy of what he wants.
Okay. It's just a grant request, but to secure that grant that we get every year, same one we had before. So I make a motion, we approve the grant request from the Emergency Management Director.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay.
Here's, Jim just needs to come in.
Did you get all your stuff that was signed?
Yeah.
Did you get that?
Yep, I got it all.
All right, and I had something else. We have an ordinance here that we do approve, which is a change to the hand, to the Park County Handbook. And so I'll read this ordinance that we, to amend the Park County Handbook. Whereas the current version of the Park County Handbook was adopted in the September 1st, 2012, and whereas the Park County Commissioners have determined that an updated set handbook is both needed and appropriate. Whereas, research as to appropriate modification has been completed and considered, and now therefore, be it ordained by the Commissioners of Park County, Indiana, that the Park County Handbook shall be amended as follows. That the section overtime, on page 14, of the Park County Employee Handbook shall be amended to include as follows. That effective October 1st, 2023, the overtime rate for all eligible non-exempt employees shall be calculated based on their base salary plus applicable longevity pay, applicable premium pay, and applicable stipends. Two and all other respects, the prior version of the Park County Employee Handbook shall remain in full force and effect. Unanimous of consent of the Park County Commissioners who were present on the second day of October, 2023, to consider the ordinance on the same date as introduced. I make a motion, we adopt same day, same meeting.
What's the number?
Ordinance, it'd be 2023-.
10.
I was going to say that, well, shoot, that wouldn't be good.
And I'll second that.
All right, move second to adopt ordinance 2023-10 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you guys will all need to sign books of these two, ones for the ordinance and ones for the same day.
Mary Emma left it. I think you guys are working with somebody to update the handbook and Jen, so you'll want to give them a copy of that.
Okay, I'll get, Pam knows who it is.
Yeah, she told me the name when I was talking to her earlier.
Okay, another item that I have, we-
I will, I can do it when I get back.
Looked at the document presented to us from Core Facilities for the jail update on the facade, and we approved that before, just asked Nick to review it, make sure the contracts were okay. And Nick has approved the contract, and it's ready to sign. So I just need a motion to approve the sheriff's office jail exterior facade project, and once we do that, I will sign this.
I make a motion, we approve the contract for the exterior of the jail.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay. Signing it now.
All right, I got one.
Okay, I didn't know if you need two.
I'll take two.
Yeah, I thought he might want one to keep two, he may want one.
Because I'll put one in the file.
And you said he wanted one, correct?
Well, he was calling about something.
Yeah, that's what it was. Okay. And Nick has looked at the subcontractor contracts he's offered, and he's okay with those. But that's all part of what we just read, I read through there, so.
He just sent us a bid package for me to look at as far as what they sent him, but I think he contracts with them, is my understanding.
Yeah, that keeps us out of doing that, yeah. Okay. I don't have any other new business or old business, I don't think.
And you brought the health department?
Jim did sign those, the independent contractor agreement for the health department for the Bridge Festival, and I was going to give those to the lady unless you want to take them.
I can take them.
Okay.
I'll send her tomorrow.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because that was the last thing on your agenda.
Yes.
The last thing to send, unless they said, let's do this week.
All right, so what Matt has sent is for, did he send you four documents to approve?
Yeah, hold on, let me bring them up.
Because I told him I didn't have it, that's why I didn't have, because you did have, so.
I can't remember.
Yeah, it's all part of excavating, it's the ephesus, and the paint.
I can forward them to you too, Jim, if you want me to-
I've got them right here, but if you've got copies, we can go ahead and approve them?
No, I haven't printed them.
Okay.
I didn't know.
Let me see if I can open these up, and we can prove them one by one, and then we can get them signed. Okay, I have a contract here with Harman General Contracting, and it's to do the downspouts, and the excavation around, the backfilling grading and all that, south landscaping, and whatever needed equipment, the total price for that was $30,000. That'd be $12,000 down at the start of the project when they actually start, and the remaining balance then do upon the completion of the job.
Is that for the courthouse?
No, it's for the jail.
Okay, okay. This is that stucco on the park, so you have two contractors? There's four subcontractors and one regular contractor.
So we have, yeah, we have a general contractor, and he has four subcontractors in there doing the stuff. So then we have, this is for the ephesus patching and the connections. And let's see if I have an amount here.
$184,843.
Okay, so you got that already, okay, good. Yes, I see it there. Oh, no, this one's for $184,843. Is that what you said?
Yeah, I just kind of marked it.
Okay, okay. So we need a motion to approve that, and then we'll do all these together. So we have the $30,000 for the Harman, we have the $184,843. This will be for the paint. Let me pull it up here. Probably have a number for that too, or is it $32,861.30?
I didn't want to steal your thunder, yes.
Okay, you steal it all you want.
And the last one's the core one.
Yep, okay, the last one would be him himself. He doesn't expect it to be that high, but that's, he's got not to exceed a $30,000 on it.
Does it have a start date on this? I don't know, spring.
Yeah, spring, in March or April, because we want to be able to do it straight through as we go. So his is $175 hourly rate, but not to exceed $30,000. And $0.56 a mile for reimbursement for mileage. So those four contracts is what we agreed to in the overall thing, and I've got the contracts specifically. So we just need a motion to approve those four as written in the package.
Do you have all that down, Bruce?
Yeah. I make a motion, and we go ahead and approve then the four contracts of part of the package of $30,000 for gathering stuff, $184,843 for the deciding and that stuff, $32,861 for the paint, and $30,000 decor.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
He did say he had three other contracts that will come eventually to go in that email. He said a security firm, T&amp;M Electrical, and then gutter contract agreements that will come later.
All right. Let me see if I had anything else, I think that's, check. If I don't look, I'll get home and realize I didn't have something.
I have what you asked me to bring two Fridays ago to jail.
Okay. Let me see here. Commissioner. Ah, I know what it was. We do not have an AED, that Automatic External Deferbulator, like the courthouse has. We do not have one in the highway department. We really should, that's really significant risk there to do that. And there are grants available to get those, I don't remember the cost on those. Do you remember a brand new one? About those costs?
No, no, a couple thousand.
Is that all it is, yeah? And so we need to approve, we need to, if we want to give them, we need to get that process started. Julie can take care of that, I think, again. But we just need to approve, approve that, but I don't have a specific, we don't have to do it today, but just so you know. The only place we don't have one, and we should have one there. I think that's all I have. All right, and what John's talking about is, we talked before about, and the council wanted to wait until they saw what the legislation said, and I'm not exactly sure what the legislation said, but I know it's coming, that we're going to have to offer John services. All counties are going to have to have a streaming service. We have to figure out how to pay John for what he does.
Not pay John, fund a nonprofit.
I understand. So we have to figure out how to pay Park without reverse for doing the services that they do, the council will too. So we just need to be thinking about that, because he's going to need some kind of agreement before we get into next year. We have to have something set up going into next year. So just think on that, and I asked him before about what other groups that he goes to. I don't mind going to them, telling them that we just need to join together, like creating some kind of a fund here to pay that entity for doing that work.
Is the state going to set any kind of boundaries on how much we have to do?
The draft legislation that was shelved for two years till 2025, I believe, what they set up in there was absolutely ridiculous. I would need a staff of 10 to comply with it. They wanted every, any meeting that took place in the same room and at the same table that you have your meetings at would have to be recorded, no matter what it is. It was ridiculous. So hopefully, nothing like that will be passed, but it does look like they're going to pass something.
We're pretty satisfied with the limit that we have now. We just got to figure out what's the best thing to pay for the head server. So I really don't have any numbers in mind, you can perhaps think about it too, and we'll get back to John.
How many do you have?
I try to get to all the town council meetings, which is 10, I believe. And then I also do-
Is it school board?
Town of Rockville. No, the school board, I was going to start doing the school board meetings, and they started doing their own.
Oh, okay.
So thank, thank God.
Yeah.
I try to get to the Town of Rockville's, what I call sub-meetings, the Park Board and the Public Safety Commission and whatnot. I can't get to all of them, obviously, but the goal is to get all of these meetings online eventually.
So think about that, we won't be able to do anything, obviously, until the first of the year, but we need to come up with it, and John's got some ideas on his budget that we can share. I don't know if you have copies for everybody to share what your budget proposal is, but if not, let's put a packet together, what you expect your budget needs to be, and where you see that coming from. We talked a couple times, we never sat down actually and gone through it line by line, but we need to do that, figure out what a reasonable budget is for that. So the service we're going to have to have, and even if the state didn't say we had to have it, I think it's a viable service for us to have, so we'll have access to it.
Well, I think, this is impossible to verify, but it's debatable, the Park County has the most transparent units of local government in the entire country at this point.
And that's always been our goal, we think everybody should have access to what we do. Because you're always going to complain, some people think we ought to have our meetings in the morning, some people think we ought to have them at night, so you're never going to satisfy, whatever way you go, you're going to offend the other half, and you're just lost by having them different times, so. And you can't have them both, and so you just need to have this kind of a thing, so anybody wants to access them at any time on their own schedule can pull them up and see what goes on. So I've been supporting this since the idea first came up. Okay, let's move on then. We'll sit down still and figure out line by line what we need to do, and try to find some reasonable expectation to offer, and I know you've been running this number, so.
I also have, I was requested that, I think most of you heard by now, the Park without reverse plans to bring charitable gaming to the Covered Bridge Festival this year. We're licensed by the State Gaming Commission, which is the only entity we have to go through. Our license is there on top.
And he did get an email, it would be a different location than what his license is. And all the fire departments, that's what they're doing, they're building on mainstream Britton there, selling gaming tickets. So they're all doing it. The state really says, pretty much, that local government can't really impact it much at all. We can't put restrictions on it, we can't really do much of anything to it. They can't, I am confident, we would find an attorney, like God, and we'd go after him if we had to.
Which is why we never ask for permission from anyone in the county, because we'd have to.
It can't tell it, but they have to have them on county property, that I'm sure we could fire. But as far as setting up someplace that allows them to do business, well, not much we have to say about it according to the legislation. Did you include that legislation on here that you shared with me?
I have the, like, the number, I don't have the text of the legislation.
Yeah, but it pretty much says that-
Title 4, Article 32.3, Chapter 1, Section 5.
And then it pretty much says that the local government cannot have any impact.
It's pretty cut and dry, it's only about six sentences long.
Yeah, it is.
And that's what it amounts to.
So he will be setting up and doing his gaming thing?
It's not lost on us that, by doing this, we represent Park County, and we aim to do that in a professional manner. We're not just going to throw a bucket on the table and call it a raffle.
Okay. Well, we're, I think we're out there with you, they're finding some way to fund it's a good thing, so.
Appreciate you guys.
The more you raise from that, the less of the county taxpayers we need to come up with, so.
Correct.
We redo that. All right, you guys have any new business or old business to bring up?
Broadbank, do we need to do something?
Oh, yes, yes, you want to go ahead and do that?
Dan, I don't know if you saw the email that's out there.
There's a list of it.
You probably did, but-
It's 126 addresses that they found.
Oh, okay.
That weren't included before.
Somebody sent an email to all of us that the state provided 2,652, and they were able to add another 129, which were at the top of the list. She said, but the bottom line is they had until September 30th to get addresses to us.
Now they got to turn them in, yeah.
And now they have, she's got to get it turned in by October 6th, this week. So we just, she just asked that we, bless the Broadbank, bless to submit that to the Indiana Broadbank Office. So with that, unless you got questions with that, Dan, I'll make a motion that we approve Cindy to go ahead and submit the rest of the addresses that we have, and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, I think that's it. Okay, Nick, what you got? You got some things for us?
Actually, Randy was the one that had the contract, so I don't know if you want him to introduce the contract.
Yeah, come on, it's Randy, we'll just go ahead and come to you then. Unless the sheriff is in a hurry, who was up in, oh, you're up first anyway, so you're-
Yeah, I took care of my other two, thanks.
Yeah, okay.
We got the contract for the bridge inspection.
Same company that we had last year?
VS, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that was for $530,297. Quite a little bit higher than it was last cycle.
He explained-
We expected more, or the end dot is wanting more work done. More pictures, more in-depth inspections.
We had that meeting at Randy's office, and he was talking about the more, even more detail of stuff that they have to do. Some of it's underwater things they have to do, they didn't have to do before.
The bridge there at the dam, they've never been able to inspect underneath it, because the water is, I think he said, almost six feet deep.
Yeah.
Even at the lowest stage. So they're going to have to do an underwater inspection, have divers come in. That's S I C A, I think it is, sage in, payers. They're, they got divers, I think, and they're doing part of the DB Eagle.
It's just a strange inspection anyway, a dive, and I know you didn't get in that water, you're not going to be able to see a thing anyway. So you're going to be down there, you're going to be feeling your way around and see if it's scoured much, how much undercut there is.
Well, as long as it was on, you may be able to see some. I was amazed that I didn't realize that Luke takes care of life and water, and they have to have a dive done in the tank in the water tower and inspect. I was amazed some of the pictures, it was a lot better quality than I thought they could have.
In a tank like that, I'll be alert this moving water all the time, that's going to be bringing stuff out of the lake all the time.
I told Joey, put his swimming trunks on, by February, dive in there and see what it looks like.
The only thing I had on that-
He's got a couple things on the contract.
Third page in, I got, it says page 1 of 33, it talks about the term, it said March 1st of 2021 to February 28th of 2027. So I don't know if they did that on purpose, and they had a reason for that, or if that's a typo under the term section, because I know they did our prior one, but. It's right at the bottom.
That's six years, easily their three-year cycle.
Yeah, I assume they meant 2020.
Four-year cycle.
So that first article might be wrong.
So I assume they meant 2024, probably, but.
Yeah, they should, yes.
All right, that was the only typo I saw on there. And then it just has notice things, which-
No, it would be 2023.
Right, but they have 2021 now.
They've got 2021.
To 2027, so I assume they just messed up when they were changing it and forgot to take out that. So they'll want to change that. And then it has you down as the notice part of it, just for your clarity. But other than that, I didn't have anything on it.
Okay.
It's just if they want to opt out or change something, they have to send him notice.
Okay, do you want to hold off on that until they get the corrections made?
We don't, we don't sign this yet.
Oh, we don't, okay.
Just got to get-
State's got to believe you.
Get them to correct everything, and we send it to state.
Okay, now, the notice, is it Randy personally, or does it Highway Superintendent Randy?
Well, it says his name.
His name.
Then it says Highway Superintendent, so.
Says it's changed in the contract, so we have it sent to Nick.
Well, I don't, I don't want the notice.
You can just change it to Highway Superintendent.
Yeah.
It's going to be more generic.
Right, yeah, that's just the signing person, right now it would be Randy, but if Randy retires at some point, then it'd be somebody else. But that's just in case anything changes, but. So those are just the two things I wanted to point out.
Randy, me know those, you know what they are then? These would be exactly-
Well, I got to go through it.
Okay.
I got to check this, I got to go.
Okay. Do you want his notes of what he's marked there?
Yeah, you can have this, I have it all on email. But those are just things I want you to be aware of, but the date doesn't be changed. As far as the notice, that's up to you guys on who you want the notice person to be, but.
All right. What else you got?
Asphalt materials, you sent a letter, Janey emailed it to you too.
I may not see it.
They're wanting to roll over their 23 bid into 24, instead of doing bids again. A lot of the county's doing that.
Really?
Yeah.
They opened up to other companies again?
Yeah, you still opened up other companies, but-
Just use their-
Asphalt's going to basically be the same as last year, or this year, so.
So rather than-
They're just wanting to roll it over.
Yeah, so instead of setting another set of packets, they just want to use last year's package?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You?
No, I don't either.
Bruce, you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't think there's, I think I've seen that in the past.
Okay, yeah, it sounds fine then.
But that's another one. I haven't kept up on the laws like I used to know.
Yeah, I'm just reading the notice to bid part of it. I doubt there's anything too crazy in this, but if you give me a few minutes, I'll be through it.
Okay, what else you got?
I've got two out-of-cycle checks. One of them's for Barney Carroll, he finished up the bridges.
Oh, good, okay.
Laddering on Meek Bridge, $2,000. Laddering on Briston Bridge, through the Commissioners' names, $500. And a balance left on Roseville Bridge, Coxville Bridge, $200.
Okay. What's the total amount?
$1,727. I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion, that we approve out-of-cycle check to Barney Carroll for $2,700.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right. Then the next one is VS Engineering, and that includes the Belcher Bridge, for the work they've done on that so far, and permitting and all that kind of stuff. And then also our meeting we had down there at Bridge 19.
How much is it?
That's for $4,189.05.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve VS Engineering out-of-cycle check for $4,189.05. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Then the next one is VS Engineering, and that includes the Belcher Bridge, for the work they've done on that so far, and permitting and all that kind of stuff. And then also our meeting we had down there at Bridge 19.
How much is it?
That's for $4,189.05. That's for $4,189.05. And 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 that's for $4,189.05.
So that first article might be wrong.
So I assume they meant 2024, probably, but.
Yeah, they should, yes.
All right, that was the only typo I saw on there. And then it just has notice things, which-
No, it would be 2023.
Right, but they have 2021 now.
They've got 2021.
To 2027, so I assume they just messed up when they were changing it and forgot to take out that. So they'll want to change that.
Okay.
And then it has you down as the notice part of it, just for your clarity. But other than that, I didn't have anything on it.
Okay.
It's just if they want to opt out or change something, they have to send him notice.
Okay, do you want to hold off on that until they get the corrections made?
We don't, we don't sign this yet.
Oh, we don't, okay.
Just got to get-
State's got to believe you.
Get them to correct everything, and we send it to state.
Okay, now, the notice, is it Randy personally, or does it Highway Superintendent Randy?
Well, it says his name.
His name.
Then it says Highway Superintendent, so.
Says it's changed in the contract, so we have it sent to Nick.
Well, I don't, I don't want the notice.
You can just change it to Highway Superintendent.
Yeah.
It's going to be more generic.
Right, yeah, that's just the signing person, right now it would be Randy, but if Randy retires at some point, then it'd be somebody else. But that's just in case anything changes, but.
Yeah.
It's going to be more generic.
Right, yeah. That's just the signing person. Right now, it would be Randy, but if Randy retires at some point, then.
Yeah.
It'd be somebody else, but that's just in case anything changes, but. So those are just the two things I wanted to point out to you.
Randy, maybe you know the notes. You know what they are then?
Well, I got to go through them.
Okay.
I got a checklist I got to do.
Okay. Do you want his notes or what he's marked there?
Yeah, you can have this. I have it all on email.
Okay.
But those are just things that I want you to be aware of, but the date doesn't be changed. As far as the notice, that's up to you guys on who you want the notice person to be, but.
All right. What else you got?
Asphalt materials. You sent a letter. I, I, Janey emailed it to you too.
I may not see it.
They're wanting to, uh, roll over their twenty-three bid into twenty-four instead of doing bids again. A lot of the county's doing that.
Really?
Yeah.
They open to other companies again?
Yeah. You still open to other co- companies, but.
Just use their.
Asphalt's going to actually be the same as last year or this year. So.
So rather than.
They're just going to roll it over.
Yeah, so instead of sending, making another set of packets, they just want to use last year's package?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You?
No, I don't either.
Ruth, you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't think there's, I think I've seen that in the past.
Okay. Yeah, sounds fine then.
But that's another one. I haven't kept up on the laws like you used to know.
Yeah, I'm just reading the, the notice to bid part of it. I doubt there's anything too crazy in this, but. If you give me a few minutes, I'll.
Okay.
Be through it.
Hey, what else you got?
I've got two out-of-cycle checks. One of them's from Barney Carroll. He finished up the bridges.
Oh, good, okay.
Uh, lettering on Meek Bridge, two thousand dollars. Lettering, lettering on Bridgestone Bridge through the commissioners' names, uh, five hundred dollars. And a balance left on Roseville Bridge, Coxville Bridge, uh, two hundred dollars.
Okay.
And.
What's the total amount?
Seventeen hundred, twenty, twenty-seven, no, twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, out-of-cycle check to Barney Carroll for twenty-seven hundred.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right. Then the next one is, uh, V S Engineering. And that includes the, um. Melcher Bridge. For the work they've done on that so far and, uh, permitting and all that kind of stuff. And then also our meeting we had down there at Bridge, uh, nineteen.
How much is it?
That's for. Forty-one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five cents.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve V S Engineering out-of-cycle check for four thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and five cents.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
And she got notes on there. I went, want a copy of them. Barney's going to pick his up after twelve tomorrow, I think.
Okay.
And you mail V S's check. Uh, River Road, we got the bike put in and opened back up. Got it all in the same day as we put it in. And so that room's open. And we got the pipe installed down at Bridgestone.
I got a call today.
Looks good.
It's a, it's a bridge that I had cleaned off before, but I think you guys may have too, or somebody else did. Between, uh, Jessup and Rockville, there's a concrete bridge that holds water. And we had a call on that. It, uh, you get sand on it. And I think there's a, it might even be a full night going across it or some kind of like going across.
There is on one side. I forget which side it's on.
Yeah.
East side.
Yeah. She said it's just, they got a lot of dirt and they have to drive through water when they go across it after a storm. And there were seedy trees, she said, growing in it. Uh, I could, I could go and do it, but I thought I would ask you guys. You guys can do that?
We can do it.
Okay. I'll tell her that, uh, you know about it and you'll take care of that then.
Okay.
That's, talked to Randy about a couple of spots today, uh, on whatever road Andy Riff lives, Riff lives on. Road they rode, yeah. Where we put a pipe across, it's kind of sunk a little bit, so there needs some stone in that. And he's got a pipe there. It needs to be fixed at some time or cleaned or whatever needs to be done there.
Yeah, clean out the lower end, far as we can go.
Okay. I have nothing else for you as far as the thing that I know of.
Where are you at with your brush cutting? I've had, and there was phone calls on bicycle.
Niceville Road, I don't know. Yeah, we're not done with Niceville Road, but I did move him down to six hundred south and bicycle.
Okay.
Farmers can't get the combine through there, yes.
That's pretty good combines anymore from the gravel roads. They take out.
Green for the blacktops.
Yeah, but.
And we, you know, another one can't get through up there on the Roaring Creek Road, so we'll go up there and we'll get this one done. And we'll come back to Niceville and finish it up, and then we'll pay it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Boy, I think that's all I have.
So you're just wanting them to approve the notice and then?
Well, I've got a signature form too.
Okay. So the, the notices, I guess you'll update the dates before you send those out though, right? The notice to the bidders, because it has the two thousand twenty dates in it still.
Mm-hmm.
For instance, it says, um, three copies, your bids, and then has them due on or before, uh, February seventeenth to two thousand twenty. On the second part. Notice to public bidders. Paragraph three in the hole. The rest of it's fine. It's just the dates need updated. And then, uh, new auditors attestation too, because Laura's not the auditor anymore.
Is this on the asphalt material thing?
It says, it's on the notice to the public bidders. It's the second thing she sent me. The first thing she sent me, the asphalt pavement requirements, it, it looked fine to me. Um, but she sent me two things to look over.
Oh, I didn't get that. I just got.
She sent me this to bring that too.
Oh, yeah, that's what we send out.
Yeah. And then, actually, is this what, is this what I was supposed to see or?
Yeah, this and this.
Oh, no, I, I don't think I got that then. I think she sent me something else.
Oh, if you want to look at that.
Here's what she sent me, the other one.
You want to look at those two things?
Yeah, they don't look too long, so I guess.
She sent the wrong thing, did she?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is real short, simple.
Then here's the signature page.
Okay.
We'll just wait for you. Like Randy's dinner, isn't that, I think?
Yeah.
Oh, David Bursford. Oh, I'm glad I said that. We got to put that away. Um, David Bursford, I called him because, remember, we had that big hole in West Union Bridge on the, uh, on the south end, south end of the bridge?
He said it picks.
And so, yeah, so I, uh, I called him, asked, you know what I'm talking about? Remember that big hole up on the entrance into, into West Union Bridge on the south end?
Oh, no, I'm.
You might hear the day we.
Oh, okay.
Proved that.
So I, I talked to Dave about fixing, fixing. We couldn't get up there with a dump truck anyway, let alone get down that access. And there's no way to get up on that and take a dump truck. So he was willing to fill it. So that's been filled. So that, that hole was taken care of. And the only thing it's going to cost us is a dinner. He couldn't pay him. Um, but I said, well, how about at least dinner? I mean, he did have to go get the gravel and haul it and put it in. So, um, I don't know what to approve, but if it's okay with you guys, I'll just take him out of dinner. I'll have an invoice and I'll turn it to Mary Ann. We'll just pay for, pay for dinner. Of course, that's going to include me on that meal too. I'm sure you understand that when I'm going out to eat. So, that if you pay for that, it's pretty cheap. It's going to be a hundred bucks for getting that hole filled. It would have cost us a whole lot more than doing, doing that. That's all. If that's okay with you guys, we're just planning on doing that after the festival and get that taken care of. He's helped us a couple of the time with stuff, so it's a, it's a good thing.
I don't, I have a problem with it.
Okay. I'll just plan on that then and bring it again. And, and if we did that, I paid anyway, so it doesn't matter. So. All right. Anything else, guys, for Randy?
This all right, Nick?
Yeah, it's fine.
I just want to sign this now.
Let's see what it is. If we can get a motion to approve it then.
This is on, uh, just using the asphalt material prices from last time, this time, so they don't have to send new.
It's, yeah, it's a rollover, yeah, an extension.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, Randy, to accept the rollover pricing for the materials from, uh, for the asphalt materials that we had for last year for twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
See, like, a fun way to do business. One way, just make copies of the sheets and turn them in next year, you know?
Yeah. Save a tree, Randy.
Yeah, yeah. I know all the other companies will know what their bids are going to be going into, when they're bidding too.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Yeah.
We normally don't have, except if they have no competition, usually, then they just have one and.
Yeah.
I scared him a horse.
Yeah. Okay. Done. That it?
Mary Ann, I think you got to sign that.
You want, you want me to take amendments and Janey copies?
I can do that.
Do you need your testament?
Go ahead and put your, well, I'd go ahead and sign if I was you. Maybe I'll do all the commission's name or something.
You just, you just need to sign, Mary Ann, you need to sign it there someplace anywhere.
I don't need to.
He wants you to, he wants you to.
He said he wants you to.
Always do.
Yeah. That way, if it goes bad, we can blame it on you.
Yeah, I can take it and have Janey.
Okay.
All right.
Me too, probably covered in that respect.
Thanks, Randy.
Uh, thank you, guys.
All right.
Guys, all have a good evening.
Mr. Sheriff?
Uh, just a couple of things to report. His main billing year to date, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. And reported collections year to date, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-three cents.
Are we all set for the schedule for the guys on the barricades for?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And I think we have all the, everything done for the, being able to complete, uh, go, keep going with the union hospital security thing. We've got that all taken care of. I got the payroll figured out. We got the payroll figured out by talking to the company about doing that. And so we approved the date to start next time with the overtime. So we got that taken care of. We, uh, got the, um, insurance question taken care of. Uh, talked to, um, MJS Insurance. And as long as it is a sheriff-approved activity, uh, our insurance covers it. And our max, uh, exposure would be ten thousand dollars on the deductible. And so the sheriff is going to have a list. Uh, I don't know how you. Might talk to George Smith at MJS to see what he actually wants, but he has to have some kind of documentation showing that it is a sheriff-approved activity as lo- as well as the school resource officers also have to be included on that. Uh, sheriff-approved activity list to be covered by the insurance.
Okay.
So that, that's all taken care of. So I think we have everything in place. The, uh, the pension, uh, pensionable pay was resolved by the pension company. All we have to do at the end of the year is send the document in showing that this much money of their pay was not to be included in pension. And they would, they said we wouldn't even question that, whatever that is, is what the, what it will be. So I think we have all those avenues covered then. And that, and Nick helped with that. We talked to them in his office, so. Got a few people together. We got it done, so they, they keep on going. So it's a good thing.
Do we have a copy of the contract?
It would be the same contract?
They'll send.
How do you want to do that?
They should, it, it had an automatic renewal clause.
So do we need another contract? It's automatically new?
No, automatically.
You just go.
If we ever want to terminate it, we have to meet the notice requirements, which I think was thirty days.
It's talking about you guys, Greg.
Yeah, that's our contract, yes.
Yeah.
And automatically renew, so we don't have to take action on it. We only have to take action to stop it.
Right.
All right. Anything else you got from us?
Probably Wednesday, Thursday, I'll probably make a trip around with, uh, Lowboy and tractor and set barricades off on the edge of the right of way. And then I'll wait till Friday morning, set them out for the road closures. As another thing, it may push me to get to the meeting on during the festival for the simple reason, I'm the only one that's moving all the barricades. And I have to do it at five in the evening. So by the time I fight the traffic and get up here, I didn't know if you guys take care of it or I.
Do we, I suppose we'll have things we need to prove when we get that meeting. We'll have payroll and things we need to prove at that meeting. So we better have a meeting then, because I can come over if Ruth is available when you come up, so we can take care of that. Won't be a problem.
Okay, that's the only thing I was concerned about, the meeting at four.
Yeah.
And it me not getting back in time by five to move all the barricades.
Yeah, I'm still working.
Yeah, you're still.
Festival too. But Dale, if you come in and come here, we just, we just shut down for the last couple of hours, but I, I can be here. And if Ruth's going to be here, we can give her.
That's the only thing that's going to put me in a bind is I'm the only one.
And then you have to.
This guy's going to drive a tractor and come with you for his walk here to get here.
Uh, actually, you can park it parked in the, in the, not, you got a trailer though, that was safe. If you come up parking, parking a lot out here by the E O C.
John Litch Park, he got paid, but he got me last year.
Funny. Okay. Do I got anything else?
Nope.
I'll talk more since I'm in public here. Oh, and you can come up here and get on camera.
All right.
So if you drive down Highway fifty-nine, you see something that doesn't exist, it's called the Mansfield Covered Bridge Festival. We've talked in CVC meetings about the importance of branding and.
They are well, they are well aware of that. They've been contacted before.
That's for a number of years, is my understanding.
We have threatened, well, I've usually been here a couple of years, so it's not been.
That's long enough.
In your opinion, it is. And your opinion matters, but that's not going to drive us to do anything special on that.
Understood.
So, uh, we've had contact with them, um.
So what's their, what's their, what's their opinion? What's their response to?
He understands that too. They have been reluctant about changing their signage. So that's where the problem lies. All the other, um, covered bridge entities understand that it's Park County Covered Bridge Festival at Tanger or at Rosedale. So they, Tanger also was in error and they just corrected theirs as well. We didn't sue them either, so.
To me, it seems like a blatant screw you to the volunteers and the tradition and everything that goes into this festival.
And you, uh, you were welcome to that opinion, so.
I wanted to express it. I.
Okay, you did.
For save the opportunity.
Anything else you want to express?
Um, I think that's it.
Okay, that'll work. Thank you. Anyone else? All righty then, for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All in favor, say aye.